Testing. Ooh, testing one, two. All right. Good evening, everyone. Glad to be here. I'm going to now call to order our evening council meeting. And if the clerk will please call the roll. Yes, the clerk should be joining us virtually.
Scott Benson, aye.
Congressman Ray Carter, aye.
Present.
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 I'm sorry, member Young has indicated that he will not be present this evening.
Here.
Present. All right, thank you for being a core and present. We are now in session and we will move to our welcome remarks by pastor of student ministries, Kevin Dupree. You can join us at the microphone.
Mike, mic check, mic check. All righty, hey, well, welcome, everybody. Thank you, guys, for coming out tonight. I don't know where I should face. Is this good? Should I face here or should we come down some? I'm just here to wake everybody up. I know we probably just had dinner and I'm here to wake us up to get ready for the meeting. I just want to welcome everybody and let you guys know that, man, we're super excited to have you guys here, man. What a great opportunity that we have here tonight, man, to hear hearts and have healthy conversations. I mean, what better time than now to have these conversations, man, towards the advancement of District Four here and this meeting here tonight. And so, I just want to remind us as being a minister here at Grace Community Church, man, I just want to remind us that, hey, man, we are in the house of the Lord. And so, I'll pray that we honor that with our conduct and with our speech, man, and really just come to the table with healthy hearts to have healthy conversations, man. And so, man, this is a great opportunity, like I said before, and, man, we're just so grateful here on the behalf of Grace Community Church to have you guys here and hosting your District Four council meeting there. So, like I say, I know these awesome folks here. Thank you, guys, for being here and giving your time here. We just want to thank them as well, too. And so, man, if you wouldn't mind, I would love to have us pray and, man, really just invite the presence of the Lord here, man, because at the center of it all, if we want to see the advancements, we want to see our plans and aspirations move forward, God must be at the center of those because He is the giver of all good things. And without that, without Him being at the center or with Him being at the center, we can believe and trust that what we put forth, man, will happen and will come to pass. And so, we're just so grateful and if you wouldn't mind bowing your heads, I would love to pray for us this evening here. Dear heavenly Father, we just thank you right now, Lord. We thank you first off for life, God. We thank you for breath and the opportunity that you give us to experience and engage with life, Lord. And, God, we get an opportunity here to come here to one another, with one another, God, and touch and agree, Lord, to come, Lord, and just really hear hearts, God, and have healthy conversations, Lord, in your presence, Lord. We know that you're in the midst of these, Lord. And, God, let your plans prevail. God, you said, "Many are the plans of a man's heart, but only your plans will prevail," Lord. And so, as we come here tonight, we talk, God, we, like I said, just unpack hearts and just hear each other, Lord. I just pray that you be in the midst of it all and let your peace rest in this place, Lord. Let your comfort come here tonight, Lord. And, God, most off, let your love shine bright through this evening, Lord. And so, we thank you. We love you. We pray for all the council members here, Lord. We thank you for their dedication to the community, Lord, and all their hard work, God, that they put into making sure that the people are cared wherefore, God, and that their hearts and concerns get to the right people, Lord. And I just pray for the people right now. Thank you for their giving of their time to come and speak on the behalf and speak of the concerns right now, God. And so, I just pray, God, that this be an evening where we see seeds being planted in water, God, so that a harvest may come here in District Four. And it's in Jesus' mighty name we pray. And everybody say, "Amen." Amen. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for energizing us and thank you for that prayer. We thank the Grace Community Church for allowing us to be here today and host our meeting. We will now recognize the various city departments that are here and also council staff. So, let's start with any city departments that are present with us today. If you can please stand to be recognized. And if we can start, if you can just state your name to my left. All right, go right ahead. All right. All right. All right, thank you to our city departments. All right, we will now move to recognition of city council members and their staff. We'll start with member Doorhall staff. If you are here, if you want to be recognized, please stand at this time. All right, President Sheffield staff. All right, thank you. President Pro Tim Tate staff. The council member himself. Council member Waters, at large, staff. All right, member Benson staff. All right. We will now turn it over to our District Four, your District Four, our District Four, councilwoman, council member Johnson.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and thank you all for being here. It is definitely an honor and a privilege to serve as your District Four council representative, but definitely I couldn't serve without your support, without you all standing in the gap in the community to provide the resources and support to your neighbors. And so, I want to say thank you for all of you, to all of you for being here and being so actively involved in the community. I have always been proud of the numbers of community organizations that exist in District Four and I appreciate your passion and your commitment to the district. And so, I want to give a special thank you to my team, if you all wouldn't mind standing, because we have collectively worked on a lot of what you'll see shortly over the last 10 months. Thank you to you. And now, I would like to share a video that we've prepared from our office just to show you all what we've been doing over the last 10 months. Hey, everyone, I'm Letitia Johnson, your District Four City Council rep. I was raised in this neighborhood on Detroit's east side. We didn't have much, but we did have schools and recreation centers that we could walk to and learn and play in a safe, nurturing environment. This experience helped shape who I am today. I believe every community should be secure and confident that government will provide good schools, recreation opportunities, safe streets, and a clean environment. Since taking office, my staff and I have been immersed in the community, getting to know you and learning about your needs, desires, and even your challenges. I know things like blight, environmental issues, basement backups, and property tax foreclosures are on many of our minds right now, but I believe we have the spirit and dedication to overcome these challenges, and I feel that spirit throughout the entire district. To address concerns that impact the quality of life for our residents, I work closely with city departments, community leaders, and advocates. After all, relationships and strong partnerships is what will help our community thrive. And since transparency is one of the pillars of my office, it's important that I keep you properly informed. My team and I make every effort to attend and host community meetings to hear from you. The meetings are often spirited, but always informative. And as your councilperson, I'll always ensure that my decisions are reflective of your voice. Having such a tall task in front of us, we hit the ground running. During our first months in office, we led a team of community volunteers who knocked on the doors of over 1,700 District Four residents whose homes were subject to property tax foreclosure. Tamara McClure rented a home in District Four, and when her landlord lost the house through property tax foreclosure, she was able to purchase it with the help from the City of Detroit Tax Foreclosure Prevention Programs. She is now a grateful District Four homeowner who's building generational wealth for her family. These first 10 months in office have been challenging, interesting, and very educational. My team and I are growing every day and doing our best to serve you, the residents of District Four. You can count on us to be accountable and hold others accountable, have integrity, be transparent, and be adaptable. Thank you all so much, and a special thank you to Media Services and Sean Bowman for pulling that video together. And in the spirit of accountability, one of the things that I really focus on is to make sure that we get information out to the community so that residents know of the resources that are available within the city. And I have invited Mr. Mason from Wayne County Community College here to share with us a little bit about what the Eastern Campus has available in our backyard. Mr. Mason?
Hello. Hello.
Hello.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, thank you to the city council and especially council member Johnson for our invitation. On behalf of our chancellor, Dr. Curtis L. Ivory, our board of trustees, our faculty, staff, and most importantly, our students, we would like to briefly share a little about where learning leads to a better life. I'd like to begin with our mission statement. Wayne County Community College District's mission is to empower individuals, businesses, and communities to achieve their higher education and career advancement goals through excellent, accessible, culturally diverse, and globally competitive programs and services. WCCCD is the largest community college in the state of Michigan. We service over 70,000 students annually. We have a tremendous footprint throughout Wayne County, servicing over 32 different cities and townships. We have six different campus locations to serve our constituents. We service both urban, suburban, and rural students. We have over 100 different academic programs, whether we're talking about associate degrees, college certificates, so that folks can be licensed, or if we're talking about micro credentials. We have something for everyone. We have a thriving division of continuing education and workforce economic development. Everything for community engagement programs like our annual passport to Africa, or if we're talking about corporate partnerships with DTE and training people to work on the power lines. Wayne County Community College District embraces what is called the open door philosophy. There are no selective admission criteria to attend WC3D, only that you have the desire. It is not even required to have a high school diploma to attend Wayne County Community College District. A matter of fact, most citizens do not realize we have free adult education programming that provides training so that residents can complete their GED and go directly into the workforce. They're also able to matriculate into our academic programs for advanced certification because all these programs are hosted at our college campuses, which is really unique, that students can get that experience while they're still completing those requirements. We have outreach programs with our high school partners so that our youth are exposed to higher education, both through the Chancellor's Leadership Institute, our reading carnivals, and particularly our dual and concurrent enrollment programs, which allow current high school students to begin their college career, taking college courses for college credit under scholarship. So, there's no cost incurred by those students or their families. Again, to encourage them with college, high school completion and to matriculate seamlessly into a college environment. We have our university center that's close to where we're at here on Harper Woods, but we have partnership with four-year institutions where students can continue through Wayne County Community College District, through our university partners, towards a baccalaureate degree, master's degree, and even a doctoral program. So, we truly have something for everyone, but we were invited here this evening to speak a little bit about some of our skilled trades programs located at our Eastern Campus, which is in the Warren and Connor area. From there, we have everything from micro credentials that will allow students to get certification into the workforce. We have our traditional skilled trades or career and technical education programs such as welding. A gentleman came in just last week offering students who had not yet completed the program jobs starting at $27 an hour. Thank you. Thank you very much. But that just underscores the need that's in our community to have well-trained individuals to take advantage of these opportunities, and that's what we're here to provide, a means by which people can help themselves, help their family, and help their community. So, we also have heating, ventilation, air conditioning. We have truck driving, where you can get your CDL, your commercial driver's license. We have a partnership with Pepsi-Cola where they provide scholarships for people to go through that program with job placement at the end. We've introduced our Rocket to Work, which have identified three skilled trades programs where, number one, we waive the cost of tuition and fees to get into those programs. Number two, there's stipends to help students continue and complete those programs, and number three, there's job placement at the end. So, there are a lot of things that are available right here in our neighborhood, but I do want to stress one thing. Though Eastern Campus is a home for some of our skilled trade program, it's not the only place because our motto is, "We have one vision, we're one district, one college." And when a student is admitted into WCCC3D, they're admitted into the entire institution. They can take coursework anywhere, whether they go to our Northwest Campus and our Health Science Center, where we have state-of-the-art dental hygiene program, nursing programs, or they go to our Down River Campus in Taylor, Michigan, where we have our Michigan Institute for Public Safety Education, where first responders train in real-life situations with burn towers, car rescues, airplane evacuations, and so forth. So, they're spread throughout the district. We have automotive repair. We have cybersecurity. We have a little bit of everything. So, we invite you to visit us at any one of our six campus locations, to visit our website, which is wccc-d.edu, where you can find all the information on all of our programs, whether they're academic or culturally enriching programs. We are your community college. We are here to service you. So, we want to be responsive, we want to be open, and we want to help support your success. A couple of other things as I leave that you may not realize that are here for you at Wayne County Community College District. For our citizens who are 60 years of age and older, we have a tuition waiver for senior citizens where they can attend with no tuition or fees. We have health care through SWIFTMD, where all of our registered students are able to receive mental, behavioral support, as well as physical, with no insurance requirements. We have food pantry if you have food insecurities. We have a student assistance center, which helps connect you to various resources throughout our region to provide you with those nonprofit agencies and governmental offices that can help support you if you have life issues that get in the way of you learning and moving forward. We have free on-demand tutoring and many, many, many more resources. So, you can always contact us through our website, wccc-d.edu. You can call us at our main number, area code 313-496-2600. Our doors are always open. You can schedule a tour. You can take a virtual tour on our website. So, again, we thank you for your time and this opportunity to share with all the wonderful people the wonderful things that we have available to service you. So, if you have not yet taken advantage, please do so. Encourage a family member, a neighbor, a coworker to come check us out. If you need help with finances, we have financial aid and scholarship programs for that as well, such as we participate in the Michigan Reconnect Program, as well as Future for Frontliners. So, many, many, many of our students have been able to continue their education or begin their education with zero student debt. So, again, we thank you for this privilege and out of respect for your time, we'll conclude.
Thank you so much. Do we have a video that we're showing?
The Eastern Campus, serving the eastern region of the district with exciting programs in welding, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, advanced manufacturing technologies, including 3D prototyping. The campus is always humming with student activity as students move from classes to the Learning Resource Center. Advanced manufacturing offerings prepare students for entry-level positions as operators and programmers. Using metal, plastic, and composite materials, they learn how to set up and operate the latest technologies to meet the needs of industries, large and small. The auto body technology program trains students to properly service and repair body panels in auto frames. A partnership with BASF provides the opportunity for training in automotive finishes. The instruction also includes CAD/CAM and CNC training. WCCCD has a close relationship for job placement with many public and private partners. The program in TIG and MIG welding, joining metal and composite materials, is used in a wide variety of industries and aren't. There is active job recruiting and placement in this career path. Climate control in residential, industrial, and commercial buildings is essential in all environments. Employment of HVAC mechanics is expected to grow over 21% in the next five years. The Fashion Design Associate of Arts degree combines an artistic foundation with hands-on training. These skills are necessary to be successful in the fashion industry. There are lucrative possibilities for the men and women enrolled in this sensational curriculum. This features sketching for design, pattern making, garment production, textile science, and CAD technology. The Constance Cooper Community Room provides a venue for many community education programs and seminars. The annual art show gives the community an opportunity to see creative student products. 3D printing, a process using modern graphics software, laser scanning technology, and industry-standard rapid prototyping equipment, is cutting-edge technology. Graduates have the opportunity to work with Linear Mold and Engineering Incorporated, a local company manufacturing products using layering technology. The 3D system makes cranial plates for victims of skull accidents and titanium heart replacements.
Thank you. Let's give Mr. Mason and the Wayne County Community College's Eastern Campus a hand.
As many of you know, access to opportunity is extremely important to me, and so I thought that presentation would be beneficial for all of us to know and to share with others. And so, that concludes our presentation. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, member Johnson, and let's give your District Four council member another round of applause for all the hard work that she and her team are doing in District Four. So, unfortunately, we did lose a core, and I just want to make sure that we're moving forward appropriately. And from my understanding, Mr. Whitaker, we can continue, but we have to limit back-and-forth discussion. Okay, so just for the general public to know, we can move forward with the meeting and we can allow public comment, however, we would not be able to engage back-and-forth dialogue, unfortunately, because we do not have a core. So, we will move now to citizen concerns, and these are individuals that called in ahead of time. They will have four minutes to speak, and we will start with Michael Cunningham. If you can join us at the microphone. I know I saw him. All right, is Renard Munchensky here? Okay, so Cunningham is first, and then we can bring Renard over second. And if you would like to make public comment and did not receive a card, please just raise your hand, and we will have someone bring you a public comment card.
It's working, yeah. Good evening, I'm sorry, I had got some disabilities, I had to run to the restroom again, apologies. Miss Anita and her family, sometimes I give her free rides, sometimes I give her half-off rides. She goes to Greater Emmanuel Church on Seven and Schaefer, I think it is, and I'm a nobody. So, you don't talk to me about the bus problems. I always say that. Talk to the power. And she said, "I didn't even know there was a nightly meeting." That's what I try to tell people. There's nightly meetings, there's et cetera, you know, just information to talk to the power. The Honorable Councilman Benson, the Honorable Pro Tim Tate, the Honorable Council President Sheffield, the Honorable Council Johnson, you know, there's access to talk to power. On Facebook, the name is Forest Subservience Cunningham, and I want to, everybody looks at the word subservience. Some people have mutated the word kind, nice, and humble into subservience. I do kind things, random acts of kindness, but I do love myself and I love Jesus even more. And just look at the breakdown of those words. People of power like to smash, crush, and just totally disseminate on someone. So, it's good to be fair. You may have power, but God likes fairness. In regards to Detroit Department of Transportation, it's gotten a little bit better, still lackluster. I'm getting complaints and et cetera. Hopefully, more council people can ride the buses like the Honorable Council President Sheffield did, and she brought her cards, and I appreciate it. That was a lovely thing, and thanks for prayers for my mom. In fact, she's around the corner at the Rivers of Gross Point. I think it was the boys' home, they told me back in the day, and they changed it to a rehab center. So, she's... So she's, I don't know, her legs ain't working, and husband dead, and son gone, and she got more joy than a little bit. I said, how you doing? I'm good. And I just scratching my head. Sure of reliance. Keep praying for her. Disabled Registered Nurse, and pray for me as well. While I'm out in the community, I didn't have much money. You know, the people been asking about my vehicle and stuff like that, and times and finances are rough. But I've been giving out ponchos for the last three days for folks at the corner panhandling. They're cheap, so they can get covered up in the rain. I've been out there before. I don't smoke, I don't drink, I don't get high, but sometimes life just happens. And so if I had to change, give it to them. If not, I've got something for them to help them out. If anybody want to contact me, three one three four 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 nine one one four. That number was made so you can remember it. Three one three four 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 nine one one four. And Councilman Pro-Tim Tate, thank you for asking them to elaborate on the difference between low-income housing and affordable housing. I appreciate you slowing things down and asking them to reply back. And I digress. I love everybody in here with our God-blessed love. Iron sharpens iron, and love covers a multitude of sins. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Cunningham. All right. Is Bernard Munchensky joining us virtually? Can move him over, please.
Yes, he can.
Yes, you can.
Yes, he is. Member of the Council, resident of District Four, resident of the great city of Detroit. My name is Bernard Munchensky. I'm an organized voter in Detroit, who is a platform, transitive agency, long-term resident of the city, and a bus driver as well. I'm speaking tonight in the Board of Health, A, Detroit Department of Transportation, passing the right. The transitive organization is with the business owners. Those individuals are designated to be not as their primary or sole means of transportation. The U.S. law of rights has listed activities to support the drivers of residents in the city. The track of the road of rights will derive from those groups of communities that we express in, drivers of the public, and the official bus driver, in a manner of. I'm asking the city councils to consider the Detroit Department of Transportation's road of rights, that those are reasonable expectations for riders as outlined in our current charter, which is that we have a right to a reliable means of transportation. However, the council will rather be taking part in the road of rights than parting with the express. How does the economy of the city have the right to transportation? The U.S. law of rights is bad, um, bad, I mean, you plan, to blow all the people, and it stands on my current charter, there may be expectations for bus rights. I'm going to put it to you, these rights. Respectful, credible, one of my comments, clean, safe, low maintenance, public health, transit. Receive of transit information in a timely, transparent, equitable manner, under strict and accurate shelter of transportation staff and transit. Add to accommodations for transit drivers especially in unreasonable means. Add to the multiple means of notification, of disruption, and of rape. Third, a fair structure that accommodates a financial condition of citizens and promotes increasing transit, I mean, increased access to transit services for pockets, that's the one we don't care about, and we want to support. Multiple illegal transportation, literature, guidance, and communications that the transit services express upon, a fair and impartial expectation of content, with thousands and resolution of complaints, increasing citizens' part in of transportation. And finally, number five, the public and municipal transit and transit related conditions before transportation. These rights simply are our transport in one part, but others in our city and city with the longer period of transit services in the area. Whether it's public cities, you can also contact this department too by finding one source, U.S. law of rights, the bus driver's act is, either B, I, E, dot, R, Y, board class, U.S. law, P, O, R, and off-countable. You can also follow the address, platform, F, one, three, three, eight, nine, three, nine, six, and you are also on Twitter, at Transit Talk, B, T, C, and on Instagram, Facebook, at Transit Talk. Finally, you can email me at R, E, N, A, R, E, S, with people, platform, dot, R, E, remember that it has an F, in twenty, people, platform, dot, R, E. I think it is, finally, a transportation president, but an opportunity to be involved and supported in the U.S. passenger of the light, if you have a rating.
All right. Thank you. You have a good evening as well. If the clerk will note, we have also been joined by Member Santiago Romero. And our next public comment is Joanne Warwick, who did call in advance, so she will have four minutes to speak. And I'm going to now cut off our public comment virtually and also in person.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This is exactly what I requested. I requested to have a community conversation about neighborhood enterprise zones and bond debt, but my requests for conversations don't get responded to. But anyway, I would like to applaud Letitia Johnson. Thank you, everybody, for electing her. I really appreciate that she pushed during the budget hearings to have an update of the master plan. Instead of doing it piecemeal and like selling off the historic fairgrounds for only $9 million, and then today they were discussing spending $7 million on ShotSpotter. But there's already lawsuit about the Joe Dumars Field House, where we're already spending $3.3 million to litigate against that. So we really got a bad deal on that. And really, that park was owned by everybody, so everyone should have gotten notice of that. And some people don't even know it was sold. And let's include that in the list of reparations. I also appreciate your staff, Letitia Johnson, because they answer the phone. They're gracious, they listen, and it's been infrequent in some offices that the mayor's office don't answer the phone. I'd also like to urge Corporation Council, if you're going to file a lawsuit, please file it against Delantis to stop the fumes that are poisoning the people here. I also think we need an independent advocate, because in the charter, the Corporation Council is supposed to defend the charter, but often they're filing lawsuits that, in my opinion, violate the charter. So I think we need an independent counsel. I'd like to thank Mary Waters for her very passionate discussion today. I'd like to see more lively discussions with details instead of the different members had one-offs, their conversations were already answered, and then they vote. That's kind of what the land bank does. I've been asking for years that the land bank meetings be put on Channel 10 and recorded. And they have, when you go to their committee meetings, the agendas don't barely say anything. They just say development projects. So you wouldn't know to go, and then they'd fully discuss them in the committee meetings, and then when you go to the full meeting, then they pretty much ram it through, but then the details are there. So there's a lack of transparency in neighborhood planning and development here. This mayor campaign saying, let's build Detroit's future together, that has not been my experience. The city website said that the real estate committee decides what to do with land. The city council, through the contract with the land bank, gave a whole lot of power to the land bank. That's why you turn around and properties are sold and you didn't know about it, because they gave the power to the land bank to sell up to nine properties without coming to city council. And so I've seen them, you know, they give a developer nine one year, then nine another, and then they come to city council and ask for more. Also, if you're not being able to buy your side lot, it's very likely you're in a hold area, and the city wants to do infill housing, but we're not being told these things. And I'm still, as everybody, anybody who listens, recognize my voice, I'm not happy with what happened in the North End, where I live, and it's really disheartening to move back to the city. It's, I feel like I'm in this time warp because so much has been destroyed. It feels like low-intensity warfare. But to not be included in the planning of a huge development on my block, and to find out that a select few people signed non-disclosure acclaimments, planned it in secret from us, and then the city council voted for it, and they didn't get all the information presented to them from our local opposition, it doesn't feel good. I don't feel valued as a resident. And the land bank's going to try and use nuisance abatement to go after 3,500 private properties.
Thank you, Ms. Warwick. That's your four minutes.
That's not legal.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Warwick. All right. Thank you. We'll now move to general public comment, and everyone will have two minutes for a public comment, and we'll start with Sylvia Green, if you can just join us at the microphone, followed by Deborah Pickett, followed by Olivia Williams.
Good morning. Ah, people say, oh, morning.
Morning.
Good evening. The honorable councilmembers I see before me, I love you all, I think you're doing a great job. However, I do have two requests. One is, I would like to see ShotSpotter voted down. Number two, I'm trying to find out, where is the help for seniors? Seemed like it just disappeared, poof, in the air. So I'm very concerned about that as a senior, and I have a cohort of other seniors who need some senior home repair. Thank you, I appreciate that. And I've been doing a forum on Nextdoor. If you take a look at it, you'll see some of the comments on there. It's a disaster. I had one person tell me, well, you should have saved up enough money. Well, at this particular time in my life, I have a furnace that's busted, I have electrical and plumbing problems, that I seriously need help, and I'm not the only one. So I just want the council to address that as soon as you can, because winter's coming up, and I don't want to be cold again. And I don't have the funds. Yeah, I used to could go borrow, you know, but you reach a certain limit until your credit gets, you know, you have to just take care of your business. So I am not the only senior who feels this way, and we would really like to know, what happened to the money? We see downtown, those nice little perky people walking around, they got their nice condos with no asbestos. I had to have my furnace removed because it had asbestos, and I do not have the money to replace it. I see that you had, uh-oh. Thank you.
Thank you. That's your time. Before you leave, though, I do want to leave you with a contact number for the Renew Detroit program. And so Phase-
I do not qualify for that. My taxes are paid, always have been paid, and my income is like $100 over the limit.
Got you. Okay.
So if you have anything else, I appreciate it.
Okay. Yep. So the city has another program, which is a 0% interest loan program, and then we have a traditional home repair grant program as well. So the number that I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you so that you can see all of the various options that the city has to offer. That number is three one three two two four three eight eight zero. That's three one three two two four three eight eight zero. And if there are any seniors who are interested in Phase Two of the Renew Detroit program, you have to be 62 years of age or older. You do have to qualify for the whole program. Phase Two applications open up October 1st and close October the 31st, and you can contact that number for the application process. Again, that's three one three two two four three eight eight zero. All right? And again, if you don't qualify for that, there's other options as well. I know that Rocket Mortgage, Dan Gilbert's company, has a home repair grant program that they launched, and there's other resources that we can direct you to. Our next public comment, you can come for it, please.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Pickett. I'm going to be brief since you all can't respond.
We have a quorum now.
Oh. Before you guys vote on the $5 million veterinarian building over at the, where the old incinerator office used to be, I hope you guys take into consideration all the retirees that retired from the city of Detroit who benefits was taken, cost of living allowance was taken. We get a little siphon for our medical benefits, which doesn't pay much. I wish you would consider giving us our cost of living allowance and increasing our siphon for our medical costs. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Olivia Williams. Anita Jackson will be next.
Good evening. I think it was back about August when I came before the council, and I was asking about getting a one-time $1,400 for the retirees. I also am a retiree, and you said you was going to have your office look into seeing if we would qualify under the program to get some of that free money that the government gave out, since the mayor wants to build that shelter at the old incinerator plant, costing $5 million for some stray dogs. If possible, can you look into that and see if there's any way we could get a one-time payout, since all of our benefits were cut during the bankruptcy, and most of the retirees is struggling very hard, just like the, yeah, he said about the home improvement. You can't qualify because you don't have any dependents. So the low monthly that we get, you're over the income limit, so we don't qualify for none of those home improvements at all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, council. I'm Eric Dewicki. I'm the president of the Morningside Community Organization here in District Four. Thank you all for coming out. I'm here to talk about the Detroit Land Bank, and I'm requesting that the council, your honorable body, exercise more oversight and control over the land bank. As many of you know, our land bank's the largest one in the country. The DLBA has over 80,000 parcels of land, which is almost one out of every four land parcels in the city. The intergovernmental agreement between the city and the land bank is up for renewal, I believe, in December. I think it's imperative that your honorable body either cancel or at least modify that agreement to maintain more control over the DLBA. For example, I had to miss a great council meeting this morning because I was monitoring the Detroit Land Bank Authority Board meetings, which conveniently happen at the same time on Tuesday mornings as your council meeting. There's five board members of the DLBA, they're all appointed by the mayor. Three of them don't even live in the city. So, you know, one of the items on the agenda today was a trade of land parcels, where the land bank is going to give 119 parcels to the city and accept 38 parcels from the city. Shouldn't council be approving this or know about it? There are many other examples, and I'm happy to work with my councilmember Johnson or any of your council staffs to document how this agreement ought to be fixed, so that you all have more control over what happens with land in our city. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is Anita Jackson here?
Hi, good evening. I was just having a complaint about the buses since the pandemic. It seemed like they have slowed down a lot more, and I know it's probably due to them having less drivers, and I do remember the time when we didn't have any drivers for like a day, and I appreciate you all still being able to keep the service running, because a lot of us do need it as far as getting the work, and I'm just wondering-
as far as, um, getting to work. And I'm just wondering if they maybe can do something like, when you have like a connector bus or something, um, maybe they could try to provide, um, more transportation. But right now, it is posing a problem for me, um, trying to get to work when a bus is supposed to be there one time. You may have to wait like an hour later, so that's, um, basically it.
Thank you. Uh, Tanisha Burton, followed by Ethel Jackson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm in District Four. I'm, um, I stay on Benetton. So I'm standing for, um, Benetton residents. And I wanted to know, um, Eagle came up with a proposal, or so what proposal. Since the, uh, the Christ plant, they posted, well, new name. Um, they got fined for almost $300,000, but they gonna plant trees. And they're gonna own three blocks away and help with the Southeastern High School. But nobody said anything about what the residents was gonna get. So I'd like to know what is council going to do to help make sure the residents get something or help? Because we are in the backyard of that. You gonna plant some trees three blocks away, but you haven't said what you're gonna do for the residents who stay on Benetton. And I need to know if y'all gonna stand with us, if y'all gonna help us, uh, make sure they do something for the residents that stay on that block also. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, one second. Member Johnson wants to respond.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you so much for uplifting that. Um, my office and I have been working very closely with the NAC for Stellantis, um, and really working to make sure that Stellantis addresses the odor violations. So they did have some funding that was provided to residents for, to improve their homes. I know that funding is, uh, in the works now. Um, but I can also share with you that I've had meetings with the EPA uh, and are looking to make sure that we have canister monitors within the neighborhood that we can monitor so that we make sure that the, the odors that are coming from the plant is accurate and the information that Eagle has is accurate as well, so that we can really, um, hold Stellantis accountable for, uh, the, the odors that are coming from their plant.
Okay.
But we can, we can make sure that, uh, my staff gets your contact information and stay connected with you.
Okay, I was gonna say, is the monitoring you gonna have, are you gonna be able to, are y'all gonna be monitoring it or get it?
We can, we can have a, a deeper conversation. Um, if you don't mind sharing your contact information with my team. They'll connect with you, uh, just behind you, and we can have a greater conversation. But we are looking to make sure that we monitor, um, the odors that come from the plant.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Johnson. All right, we're, um, let me see here. What's your name, ma'am? Okay, go right ahead, Ms. Jackson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My concern is regarding the continued redlining of the insurance companies here, uh, of the city of Detroit. Now, that was supposedly discontinued, uh, with the election of Mayor Duggan. That was one of the, of the, uh, points that he, it was supposed of taking care of. Um, my insurance went up again for my home and my vehicle. Um, I was told by the, the representative, the agent himself, "Well, you living in the city of Detroit, that should have nothing to do with it." And also about this credit stuff, that should have nothing to do with it. If you don't have any accidents and if you don't have any tickets, it should be straight across the board, whatever your vehicle is or what kind, should have nothing to do with your credit and what zip code you live in, in the city of Detroit. That's my comment.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you. Uh, I think that is all of our in-person public comments. And so we're going to move now to our virtual public comment. We can go to our first caller. The first caller, we can't hear you, Paris. The first caller is Miriam. Miriam, if you could unmute by pressing star six. I can move on to the next person, Madam President. Okay. The next caller is Robert Palowski.
Good evening, how do you do?
Yes, you can. Good evening.
Good evening, Robert Palowski. Uh, I'm a senior representative of the Southeastern, how do I represent, I'm a senior representative of the East, I'm a resident. April, the end of the year, I'm twenty years in the making. Um, I just want to shine this light, uh, a couple of city council meetings back. I don't know if you guys are interested, but we, uh, we have a city council, we have two boards that get around, I don't know, it's just something to do with her. And we'd like to be able to, uh, specific to her. And what we do is on a council, a council that is personally involved with the charter. Uh, some of you might know her, but some of you that are not, but they're involved with the charter. They really love to introduce stories, more involved with the, uh, people, more involved with, uh, what's going on, and how we can help the, uh, and give college and people, yeah. The second thing I want to add, you know, is the honor of your most dear, you got, was that pleasure of the, uh, the, uh, this year. Uh, this Saturday, we had a huge party down at Anderson Park. And it was wonderful just to meet some of the drivers, meet some of the drivers, uh, some of the drivers, try to meet some people, so that, as well. But also meeting the drivers, and it's same for, uh, being especially, I mentioned to the council, they're saying, uh, careful because the driver that just tried to get back from, you know, I said some of them, I really liked the doors and the car back.